Counseling services in Jewett City. Find them online at life's journey C T dot com and click on book appointment for information on how to start or to simply get questions answered. Life's Journey Counseling Services has multiple therapists on staff, so your questions, concerns and counseling needs will all be met. Life's Journey C T dot com. It's the best place to start your personal journey to heal, become a better version of yourself and strengthen your relationships. Life's Journey Counseling Services, seventy Main Street here in Jewett City, life's journey C T dot com.
Your community radio.
Live from Main Street.
Mike Minarski and Rich Wasselik in the morning and eighties all day and night.
S N S N.
I can never get the uh, since they have this new board here, it can't seem to get the green. Can you hear me okay? It does. Say I don't.
You going down a hallway looking for an alien.
Yeah, I don't hear anything in my headset but music. But can you hear me? No. Really? Nope. Oh, that's not a good sign. How about now? No. So now you're gonna make me look. Because I've been doing this every single day, trying to figure out this headset in this whole thing.
Of yourself, a better version of yourself.
What are you doing? You 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 gotta refresh that dude, that's old. That's what's up. No, I gotta I gotta check this now. We are so professional. That's all right, good. Yeah, I just can't hear you myself, that's all right. Anyway. It'd be like at home. Huh? It would be like home. Alright, so we uh, we have a couple of uh, special guests again this morning. And I'll tell you, just a just a lot of um, it's a lot of great things. It's starting to happen. And a lot of it encompasses around the Board of Education and what's going on with Griswold Public Schools. So once again, want to welcome Mr. Sean McKenna, Griswold Public Schools Superintendent. Sir, good morning. And of course, the Chairman of the Board of Education, Mary Beth Mailer.
Good morning.
Who who gets these people all the time? Me do, because these guys are great. Gotta get the information, you know? Yeah. Um, so let's just start out, I guess, with the Board of Finance meeting from the other night. And um, Sean, like we did last time, I'm just gonna give you the floor. And I think it was a personally, it was a I'm very proud of what happened, you know, for this town. But I'll let you, of course, you speak.
Uh, so good morning, thanks for having us and a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to everybody. We were thrilled that the Board of Finance allowed us to have a field study. So dates back to the spring, that was to the tune, right, Mary Beth, of thirty thousand dollars? And we're very great grateful for that. And on Monday night, the Board of Finance, Tuesday, excuse me, they were kind enough to allow us to present the findings of that study and where we were with moving that concept forward, the multipurpose field. That's been sort of developing, if you will, for the past couple of years with the good support, excellent support from the Board of Ed and an ad hoc committee, the excellent work of the ad hoc committee members. So this is something that really, talk about grassroots, it came from the community. Um, the Board of Finance saw the presentation, we put our presentation online, the Board of Ed approved this on the twelfth, right, Mary Beth?
Yep.
Um, we had a field turf representative, a Vice President there, Andrew Dyjak, to field questions. I thought it was it was respectful discussion. Obviously, in from my view, I think this is a great investment for the community.
Absolutely.
For the kids, for for the families, for Griswold, for seniors, for people that exercise. We had a lot of data in our presentation about teams, people that um, that use the campus. I mean, you and I've had that discussion, I mean, having come from other communities, our campus is a community center. People exercise there, they walk the grounds, they take their dogs for a walk, you know, we have, we do have some seniors that like to use the track because you don't have divots and sort of, you know, it's even. So I I thought it was a shining moment for us, Board of Finance, they have every right to ask good pointed questions. Those those questions were met with responses. Um, and so we look forward to the next step, hopefully it's to the selectmen and then it it. I don't know the exact pathway, but then hopefully we get it to the voters. So a huge thanks to the Griswold Board of Ed, a huge thanks to the Ad Hoc Committee and a huge thanks to the Board of Finance.
Nice.
And a huge thanks to the people that that came out to support us that night, there was quite a group of people.
It was a nice group out there.
It was, and we also received a lot of emails for support for this. So we're very thankful for everybody for attending and supporting us in this project.
This has been a great thing, I mean, I love the way that people are talking about this, it's very positive. It's it's not, I do not myself personally hear a lot of negative about this at all. And if even if there is, and I'm sure there are, right? There's gonna be there the detractors. I think that once they see what I am so excited about this, I can't even tell you. It's kind of like what Dan Webster said, you know, I can't support this enough. And I that's kind of the way I feel with it too, you know, just from the resident side. And but anyway, getting back to anybody that may be a detractor on this, I just say, look at the materials that are there. You know, look at the stuff that Mr. McKenna, you know, has put out online. Yeah, I think if they're not supporting it, they're not looking too far into it, possibly, that's most likely usually what happens. Well, how many times have we seen it? You know, we're not not just with 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 like Griswold Public Schools, but just town business in general. Where you have, well, I don't know, I don't know, but these are the one, these are the folks that haven't looked at. They're just making a knee jerk reaction of what they think. This right here is just a slam. Um, like I said, you gotta invest in your community, your seniors and on the other side. Absolutely. Without that, anybody in the middle is not gonna be productive at all. Is this, is this, would you say like the like, put the 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 sign out front of the of the campus, that's one.
Great, great project, yeah.
And now this right here, is this like the final piece or the final big?
We've got a lot going on, we've got an old school project.
Yeah, but I know this is huge, I think this is.
No, go ahead. Well, this is huge, but this is the biggest piece of a project. But we're not, we do have a baseball field that needs to be addressed and there's other things, but we've got to get over this first and get the alt school. And then kind of just see what path we're gonna take next, what's gonna happen next for us.
Now, when you came in as Superintendent, yeah, did did you have this vision from the beginning of what you wanted to do with Griswold Public Schools and the direction you wanted to take it? Because I'll be honest with you, Sean.
Yeah.
Um, you've done amazing things, you know, just from the business model of sending town students. Uh, and that increasing over the years steadily and the revenue that comes in from that, which I, again, I don't think people realize, you know, how important that is.
Yeah.
Uh, and just uh, just the different learning centers in the schools now that this projects.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, is this something that you thought of right off, I mean, how long did it take you to develop this? Because it's amazing, it's very incredible.
Anyone that works with me or knows me, I always, I'm very grateful for that, but it takes a team. I have a great Board of Ed. And this was a partnership that started, um, I I was talking to Mary Beth, I won't get into details for reasons that she knows. In March of two thousand sixteen, when I had my first interview, it was actually Holy Thursday, which I was, my stomach was turning in different ways to Sunday. So we've been building it and it's been a team effort, it's been a community effort, I take no credit. Because it's about the kids and there are great things and did I know there are great things in Griswold when I got up here? Absolutely, no questions asked. But you start looking around and you start talking to your Board of Ed and you start talking to community members and you start talking to the kids. And it's not rocket science, you start saying, you know, how can we make it better? You know, um, I have a great team at Central Office, Clambo Bossier, who's got a rich history with the district and is usually pulling me off a ceiling and saying, okay, now I can't like Sean, I gotta, you know, like.
I'll deal with Sean.
You know, how are you, what are you thinking? And he's he's great to like interpret. Sometimes, I don't know, I go off on these weird tangents because of the way I think, so he's a good interpreter for me. You know, we've got a great Board Chair, a great Board of Education, fantastic parents. I don't know if you guys got to that um, G M S P T O holiday thing, it was like amazing. Great faculty and staff with, um, you know, I call him the Maestro, Mr. Churchill with the music. And great teachers, so did I know that there were great things in Griswold? Yes, but it's about getting everybody in the same boat, rowing in the same direction and saying, okay, guys, come on, we've got to do this, and we gotta do that. And I think that this this field is the culmination of the community. The kids, the parent alumni, the Board of Ed, and it's a shining moment for us as we see it come to hopefully fruition, I'll marry for the grace.
So you guys, like with the Board of Ed and I don't haven't attended a lot of Board of Ed meetings, obviously, but is, you guys have like a ten year plan, twenty year? Do you have a plan that they're working towards in the end eventually or?
We have a Griswold Forward Plan.
Okay.
And it's sort of a compass. Um, and first and foremost, um, we have a mission and a vision that we stick to. And the first, one of our first goals is to take care of our kids.
Okay.
We want to make sure that they're taken care of.
Students come first, no matter what, and whatever we do is all student driven.
Yeah.
I I don't look for any accolades, awards, cookies, like Sean, I'm not here for that, I'm here for the kids.
Cookies are for you.
She's looking for cookies.
I bought those because I'm baking tomorrow and I have wanted to bring something in for you guys.
Excellent.
Up by my, where I work, so but everything, you're welcome.
We thank you.
No, but everything is for the kids.
Yeah.
I'm, Board members are here for for the kids, they're not on their personal agenda. And that's how we operate and we just push forward for these students.
So it's a plan, but it's more of a compass to like bring us into the future. And it's not too complicated, there there's a vision, a mission, there are three goals. And as Mary Beth said, it's very kid centric, it's this is not about adults, this is not about, it's not about me, it's about, you know, what our kids need, how we can support them and how we can get them to the highest levels of achievements and performance. And that might be in athletics, that may be in theater, that might be in music, that might be in a combination.
Esports.
Esports, esports, oh, that's a big thing. So that is taken off.
It's about the kids.
Right. There's just so many options. Yeah. I mean, when I, when I, of course, none of this stuff was talked about in nineteen eighty four. And to just to see it now, what's happening? It, you know, to my old school and old school campus, it's just, it's really mind boggling. I don't know if I really have been able to wrap my head around it. And I think I probably will, it'll hit me when that first light pole falls.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? And that's like, here we go. And it won't be in the center of the field.
No, they're being moved.
Yeah. But in it, that scoreboard, that's uh.
Yeah, we added that slide.
We added that.
Seen the presentation, we just added that a couple of days ago.
Oh.
And just the aerial shot, you can see it on the screen right now, it's just, you know, how it says Griswold Wolverines on both sides.
I mean, this looks like, like to me, it's like, okay, you know, we're watching a college game on a Saturday.
Oh, yeah.
You see a beautiful field, right, and you see an aerial view and I'm like.
Right.
We're gonna have that right here. Yeah. Who would have thought? It's gonna be a magnet, I think.
I totally agree, I to I I think for real estate, I think for tuition and I just think for people like, okay, let's let's check out that district right off of three ninety five and it's right there, location.
I don't think people understand, and Mary Beth, you're in real estate, so you you would know too, is that. Thought I forgot that. Is is that, I don't, I don't, I see it, and I'm sure you do too, the direct correlation of what this project is with real estate and economic development, you know, within this town.
This is going to be a big draw, people are going to want to move here. Um, and by moving here, more housing, um, but economic development needs to happen because that will also draw people here. You know, and what's beautiful about the campus and I keep saying, and people have said it to me, do you know how lucky you are that all three buildings are housed on one campus? I said, when my kids were here, I said, yes, I do. And they're like, I have to go here for this one, here for this one, here for this one. I said, it's wonderful, it's just wonderful, they're all housed there and it just makes life very easy and it looks, it's a beautiful campus. And the sign was just, is just perfect.
Yeah.
It's like a completion to that section of the campus and this will be the completion to the back end of the campus.
I I realize it, you know, I realize it all the time, like when I travel to different schools, like just a week and a half ago, we went to Bacon Academy to do a boys' game. And I I love Bacon Academy, they're very nice to me and stuff and um, we had this really cool setup and um, but leaving the building to get back onto Route Two, go down about what, half a mile? There's a middle school.
Yep.
And I'm not kidding you, it hit me, I'm like, I don't get it, this is how good we have it here, having everything just in one plot, it's just, it's amazing. Like a lot of towns I came from, you have to travel twenty minutes sometimes to go to a middle school.
Right.
You can just walk right across the street, yeah. So. So if if I'm not mistaken.
Sure.
Just uh, as far as maybe a timeline, which nobody can predict.
Right.
But one of the things that um.
It did come up the other night.
Yeah.
You know.
The gentleman from Turf Field said, Andrew, Andrew, that the hope, I guess, is that uh, once everything passes through.
Yes.
And uh, and the shovel goes into the into the ground. That's.
Yeah.
That they're gonna play game number one on the brand new field, hopefully in the two thousand twenty three uh, season.
We're hoping.
We hope, that's what I said.
That's actually, that's the ideal situation and I think it's achievable. Um, and that's why, you know, I'm gonna leave it to the good people that are doing some research about that pathway we we kind of talked about. Um, we're hoping, we're hoping, and it would make sense to do that because um, you know, it would be nice to host the games here rather than pushing our kids.
Pushing our kids, busting them out for their games.
So we hope.
Well, I personally, and I don't expect any comment on this.
Yeah.
But I think with winning over with the wonderful presentation of the Board of Finance, that's it. Personally, I I think, because I think they're they're the governing body in this town, I think, the the Board of Finance, they're the ones that say, ah, or uh huh.
Right.
And they're all, uh huh. So and and I saw it with my own eyes and it's it's just a beautiful thing, so I don't have any doubt. And I'm just excited, I'm just excited. I mean, I'm gonna say things probably more than you guys, because you guys gotta, you know, like, okay, wanna say this yet.
We're very excited, very excited. The schools were buzzing, the kids were buzzing, there's kids that are like, I get to play my senior year on a turf field. I mean, how how much, how great is that?
You know, so many kids at the Board.
Yep.
What kids go to a Board of Finance meeting? Kids at the Board of Finance meeting?
Yeah, there were students there.
There were students there.
Wow.
This is, I think, this is something that they're very passionate about, you know, and I think.
And let me also explain, we probably would have had more students and parents there, but the high school choral concert was going on and that is a packed house over there. So, you know, unfortunately, it was the Board of Finance's regular meeting, we don't control that. But, you know, we had a lot of people that called us, a lot of people that emailed us. So hopefully at the next meeting, when we have to have a public hearing, we get more out there too. But we were very impressed with people that attended.
There is a question that just popped up and from Jennifer and I want to go ahead and read it to you. Uh, I was not able to attend due to a meeting conflict, but I have a question with the up to three point eight million dollar plan. Does it include a new concession stand in restrooms or will we have the current stand in the portable restrooms we currently have?
That's a great question, and when you start a project of this magnitude that has to have a lot of research and you're given a budget, so we were given a budget to do it. Um, that is not included in the plan. The hope is to, and I know Mary Beth knows this is a sore subject with me because I really wanted what we call a master plan. And that was on the table, I get it, we had to prioritize and go with this. Um, so great question, Jennifer, my hope is that we can address that um, in the future. But that, you're talking the existing concession stand, either a reno or complete. In talking to Al Carpenter, this is very conceptual, very sort of ten thousand foot view, that's like at least another five hundred thousand dollars.
Just a concession stand.
Well, just I think what people were thinking about is like adding bathrooms and maybe adding some, i- if not locker space, team space. Um, and in talking to Al Carpenter, he said, Sean, that's gonna, that's at least, just from a ten thousand foot view, not getting into the granular stuff and, you know, getting more power down there and plumbing. That's at least five hundred thousand dollars. And we thought that, okay, let's focus on the priority here and then we'll get to these other things.
So a contingency, we're we're going from three point eight to maybe five million bucks. I I can't, I can't speculate, but.
Could be four point five, five million, you know? And the problem is down there because you'd have to have, if you do the bathroom, you have to have a pump up. You have to have a pump up system, you have to have a pump up station, so and to tie it on, it's it was very complicated right now. So and very costly, so again, as Sean said, we had to prioritize.
Got it.
Yeah.
All right, so I I think we've uh, is there anything else you want to talk about, you know, as far as the field is concerned or?
No, I think.
Your uh.
I'm just excited.
Your relationship with the Board of Finance and.
No, we're with, thank you to the Board of Finance, we're very humbly appreciative and we're very appreciative of all the folks in Griswold and the everybody that worked on. I don't want to start naming individuals because I, you know, but groups, obviously the Board of Ed, the Ad Hoc Committee, my administrative team. A lot of people have put some blood, sweat and tears, the Board Chairman, um, the Board of Finance Chairman and everybody has been really super helpful.
Team effort, and we have a very good relationship with the Board of Finance.
That brings up an interesting thing that just popped into my head, a lot of people don't realize the backwork that goes into a project like this from the committees.
This has been two years.
Yeah, and like, the time that goes into it on those committees and.
Right, and I think you raised an interesting point, and then you talked to someone like Glenn who has like a twenty eight year history. This topic has come up before and there were people that fought for it, so their efforts have to be recognized and and I get it, you know, timing is everything and, you know, so yes, it's been two years, but history probably dates back, I had to get like specific dates from Glenn way back.
I think even to the building of the new high school that came in.
Yeah, I think even back then, so I think, so, you know, it's great for Griswold, it's it's a real shiny moment for us and we're we're so appreciative.
All right, so let's move on to a different subject.
Okay.
Uh, the alternative school.
Okay.
So now, talk about that.
Talk about that.
Yeah.
We're moving, progress, we're progressing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't really know a whole lot about that project, I'll tell you what I do know and you probably know a lot more than I do. You know, but from what I understand, the uh, the one out in two oh one is broken down and it has been for some time.
It's quite a bit of maintenance work on it right now.
And but the idea, since the senior center uh, has moved from Sewell Street up to Taylor Hill and their big, brand new, beautiful facility. Then now this opens up this building for something possible, so um, from what we know is that there's there's talk and or moving into maybe the alt school into the old senior center.
So that's another project that's been.
Three years.
Three years in the making and again, uh, many, many people have been involved with it and many people, you know, dating back to the Betty Oska administration that brought the alt school up here because I think it was.
In Norwich.
Um, to have it in town, so this is, again, great things happening in Griswold, how do we make it better? Uh, so we believe, meaning the school administration and I and the Board of Ed, that having uh, the facility closer to campus just makes a lot of sense in this day and age for an assortment of reasons. Facilities reasons, safety and security reasons.
Lunch transportation.
Lunch transportation, ensuring that we can get kids to and from the campus in shorter amounts of time and with greater ease. So uh, this is a project that we're working on, um, again, the Board of Finance, a few years back commissioned an architectural study. We did that, we've we had a committee, a joint committee, uh, Mary Beth's been a part of it with the town and the Board of Ed. That has changed into a school building committee, we've already had two public hearings on it, architectural renderings have been drawn. Um, this is currently, and I'm praying to God it stays within budget, um, we took some of the ARP S R money, did the district god that, let's face it, we could be applying it elsewhere, we said, no. Let's put a chunk of that money towards this project, that's three hundred thousand dollars. Um, and hopefully uh, that's going to get underway, I'm praying to God soon so that we can start the new school year.
In that building.
In that building.
Well, it's gonna be a whole new thing next year, isn't it?
Yeah.
Being on the. I knew I said that for a reason then.
What happens when you don't sleep one?
Tell me about it, I got out of work at four A M this morning. But the um, being new to the committee, I just really wanted to go and listen and learn, I learned a lot about what an alternative school is myself. So I think that was an interesting aspect of, a lot of people don't realize what an alternative school is.
And I think you've rightly raised a great point because there's some like misinformation out there that people think it's um.
Can you give us a brief synopsis, you know, of what an alt school is?
School these days is a school setting for kids that just cannot, that need a different setting than the traditional setting. And I think there are some folks out there that have this image in their mind that, I'm not finding the right word, that it's like a, it's like a detention center. That it's that it that it's a place where kids, and it's not, it's not, we have.
Troubled kids.
Yeah, so we have, so I would take that word out, I'm an English teacher and I would have, I would put in kids that need an alternative setting, you know? And we have nowadays students that do better in a small community. We have one um, clinical person there, it's a social worker to that works with all the kids and works with the teacher, there's greater personalization. Um, and a lot of kids have been successful in that program, so we're thrilled to offer it. We're, I'm really excited about the new space and um.
Is it actually bigger? Is this actually?
It is.
It is bigger because.
Floor space that's able to be used is larger.
Yes, because the one out on two oh one is very choppy, a lot of it, you just, you can't use the second floor whatsoever. That is totally locked off, I couldn't even get up there to try to look at it. Um, you got a big room in the center, that's really a lot of wasted space, not good conducive for a lot of individualized learning. And it's just very choppy and there's just like rooms everywhere. So this is gonna be a much better setting, a much better flow to it, and the kids are going to thrive over there and, you know, as I say, as I say, I always preach this, they're a part of Griswold Public Schools. They may not be on Griswold Public Schools campus necessarily all day like a, you know, regular, the other students are. But they're still part of Griswold Public Schools, they're counted in as our enrollment. So I am really behind this project also because I believe that they deserve this. It's going to be a much nicer learning center, center for them and they deserve it, they're part of Griswold Public Schools just as much as every other student on our campuses.
Yeah, the prints look like, it offers like a real school setting.
It does.
And then one of the things I liked about it too, again, looking to the future, it allows more space for more kids.
It does.
Yeah.
That Sean can talk about numbers as far as what we have, what we could accommodate.
Yeah, we have about, we can accommodate about twenty, we have a little under that right now, but with this new space, we could accommodate thirty.
Gotcha, gotcha. So what if you outgrow that, where do you go?
I don't know.
We'll figure that out when it happens, we have to, we.
Shut up, Mike, let's do this first.
I always tell everybody, let me get over one hurdle first, onto the next hurdle.
I heard it's gonna be in that town huge community center they're building. The whole huge campus they're building, that's right. Public Safety Complex and. This one Lisbon comes in and takes over, that's what's.
Next to the Griswold Airport.
You know, there is one, right?
It used to be.
There's a guy that owns his own airport out, I'm just throwing it out there.
Oh, no, I I know. One of one of the tree farm gentlemen.
Yeah.
It's the same place they have uh, Ray Churchill's.
Yeah, he's gonna build a regional airport.
Rich goes, he's got a, he does, he has a, he has a runway. So.
Yeah, we just gave him the permit if he wants to.
They had to renew it?
Yeah, every so often you gotta renew it. Yeah, and I'm going off way off course, yeah.
We used to have, we have, we used to have an airport.
Lay some drag.
Yeah.
Just a bunch of cessons around there, I don't know why they shut it down.
Who knows?
Well, I think this is amazing, I said, you know, we talked about it before and everybody uh, that I've talked about all of these projects that's happening with Griswold Public Schools, the the field, um, the alt school. It's just, you talk about moving Griswold forward and this is the epitome of that. And I really hope more people that aren't aware or they don't know what's going on, educate themselves and what is going, actually what the nuts and bolts of things are.
Right.
Before they come out and say something negative that they're gonna retract anyway, once they learn. Like I say, like, the way you guys did the presentation, that I've never seen anything like that presented with a community like that before with all the information, just, well, here it is on a screen.
No, and thank you, and there's like, and if there's, if there's information that. No, and thank you. And it's like, and if there's, if there's information that people want, we always say this, let us know. Sometimes I don't have it with me, and I'm not gonna speak to it like Sean. It's like, okay, well, we gotta research that. We'll get it out to you. Just give us some time.
And we do get back to people.
We do.
If they have questions, let us know and we'll get back to you.
So again, communicate.
Right. Sean's an amazing, his presentations are amazing. I have.
I have Robin to edit that because usually like, I'm like doing it like early in the morning and I misspelled the.
But his presentations are amazing. Soup to nuts with his presentations.
Okay, yeah, I mean, anything that I've ever seen that's out there, very complete, and I don't usually have questions at all after I, I watch one of your presentations. Thanks. Kudos to you, sir. Anything else you want to add about what's going on? I mean, I probably, I probably missed something. I always do.
Just watch our Facebook. We try to update it, you know, Caronda gut, that nod. On the day paper, that was super. And we've got some other things I know in pipeline where our students are getting into colleges and who has plans for.
Oh, Mike Strain?
Quinnipiac.
Yeah, yeah. And some other folks and, you know, there's just great things. And I know that Ray has, is it banned tonight?
I think the band is, I think Amanda's tonight.
Tonight.
For the band concert.
The basketball team, boys, girls, middle school, high school, they're all looking good. Wrestling, numbers are up.
Yeah.
I hear, I hear from Coach Cook, and so like great things are happening.
It's the bands going to Florida? Is the band that's going?
Yes. They go into Disney World, March first to the fifth. All the, the music students who signed up.
They're playing down there, right?
No, not this time. They're going for, they're going actually this time, it's really pretty neat. They're going into workshops with Disney people on, you know, music and all this development. And so they're, they're all taking workshops down there. So it's a nice trip. There's about a hundred and eight of them going, which is nice.
Our elementary school, I can't remember the exact amount, huge donation.
Oh, two thousand.
Two thousand kids and the faculty.
Wasn't it pajama day or something?
Just made a donation.
To some cancer society?
I'm having an older moment.
I don't know.
They made a donation to a worthy cause.
Something with children's cancer.
Okay. And our middle school students.
Jimmy Fund?
No, I don't know if it went to, it's gonna bug him. I don't know if it went to the children's hospital here in in Hartford, or if it was something else that.
Yeah.
But it was for children's cancer.
St. Jude, well, that's a big national.
Yeah, I don't know what they did. I read it real quick the other day.
And if anybody, hold on a second, I just had it, two thousand dollars to Connecticut's Children's Medical Center.
Oh, CMC, yeah.
And then our middle school students, you know, we have our teams up and running. There's a science Olympiad. And I've been telling people the Nexus has like a baby brother or sister down at the middle school called the Launchpad. So we have kids in there sort of following that coding, advanced technology.
So for when they get to the high school, they can.
So you get an IT program a little bit?
I, I, yeah, super size. I think, I think what they're doing with the gaming concepts and, and sort of, it's not just, okay, open up a Word document. It's, this is really advanced. If you want, if you wanna come to Grizzle Tysoe and you're shopping high schools and you're interested, your child's interested in technology, this is the place to be. Because the stuff that they're doing is just incredible. Preparing our kids for game design, coding, computer programming, Python.
Coding, really?
Oh, yeah.
That's amazing.
One of our teachers, Andy, he, he is in the science department. We now have to do tech. He's a part-time adjunct professor and teaches this. So the stuff that they're, those, the stuff that those students are getting in a small, in a smaller setting, I would, I would argue, is amazing.
And that's in the same, what was it, Green Room or something?
So it's called the Nexus. So that's the Advanced Technology Lab. And then they, we have one at the middle school called the Launchpad, and we have Jim Rand, who really is developing a national presence as a gaming concept, game-based study, esports expert. He goes between both schools. So our middle school kids are getting that, and so are our high school students.
So that's an interesting concept though. How did that come around?
So this came, this came about, we've been doing just some work on allowing our teachers to be innovative and to be creative and take risks. And this came about a couple of years ago. I cannot take any credit for it, but it's, it was Jim Rand and Kyle Gunderman and Glenn LaBosier looked at, we had some leftover funds and how can we, how can we, how can we make lemonade from lemons? You know, the, the pandemic was left a bad taste in everybody's mouth. How can we create more opportunities for our kids? So we polled our kids. They wanted more technology classes. They wanted, you know, different kinds of courses. And so it went from there and it's just amazing what's happened.
Great.
It's amazing what happens when you listen to the kids.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
It develops.
Someone was explaining, the world's changing, you gotta change with it, and the kids are leading the way. How are they gonna learn better? You gotta give that to them. That's.
I know, just if you think about it, just even the pathway.
Yeah.
It's completely different, you know?
Yeah, we have, and it's, this is important to know, there are colleges out there that actually have a game study major. So, so the kids, yeah, so the, they, they use, we're preparing for our kids to do software design where they can design these screens, a video game, a website, because we are moving in that direction. So much is happening online. It's not just commerce. It's not just emailing. It's not just, you know, everything is augmented reality, virtual reality, even with the NFL. The, the different, difference, I could go on. So our kids, we've actually brought in a college, I think it was Nichols College, that has a program at the Massachusetts, and they have spoken to our students who are doing this coursework, because it is, it can provide a career.
It's actually funny, my nephew just graduated from doing that.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, and he loves it.
They'll have a job.
Yeah. Yeah. And it's interesting, because a lot of the kids, like, we're looking at running a hybrid EMS program from Firehouse. And we have a lot of kids that are interested in it and from around the region that want to do it. And they don't wanna sit there and listen to someone talk to them for, they want it quick, they want to read it, they want to do it, they want it.
They want hands on.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Pathway is so much different.
Yeah.
When I would, when we were in high school, mine was go through middle school, go through high school, and then either get a job, go into the military or go to college.
Yeah, and even the, even the military, look at what they're doing now too.
Right.
So they can take all those skills and sit in the box and fly the airplane around the world.
And so much, so much, so much of what's happening, we have a good friend of ours who's a Commodore down at, at the Navy base. So much of that, like in terms of mapping things out and looking at screens and looking at sea skapes, it's technology. It's not, you know, the old pencil and, you know, it really, you have to have a certain skill set to be in, to be in that part of the noise.
Yeah. And it's funny, I asked my son, he goes to Grasso.
Yeah.
I said, Ryan, where's all your notebooks? What do you, it's like, notebook for what? Yeah, he had a trapper keeper. It was like this wide and he never used it. It's like, they don't even use those things anymore. I'm like, amazing. It's. But I mean, better for their facts.
I mean, when you said, where, where are you?
We don't use them. They don't have paper. They don't have any of that stuff anymore, which I guess is good for the environment somewhat.
Right.
But it's all the way around the world. Business. Yeah. But I think that's the pathway they're looking at now though is.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And we also have another great program. You could speak about it, our pipeline manufacturing. These kids are coming out and getting jobs at eBay.
And not just minimum wage, maybe a handsome salary for a student who has a skill set in pipe fitting or can jump into that kind of training and understand. I mean, that's something that I would need intensive study with. But, you know, our students are coming out of those programs going into eBay, so.
There, there, there are a lot of, not just CB, but Chris Jewels place.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
You know, I mean, he, they promote that pretty heavily too.
Yep. I agree.
Just getting kids ready for the next level.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's, I mean, that's something else that got lost a little bit was the hands on. Mechanics and.
It's very necessary.
Especially around here. They didn't, for a long time, at least when we were growing up too, college was pushed, college was pushed, academic, academic, academic. And now they're having technical schools, like this program's through EB and this that are actually teaching them a skill because they're not academic type. So it's, and they're making just as much money almost, right?
It's just as important. It's a trade, it's a skill set. And you know, like with Rosso, it's too far from my house, that facility is amazing, as well as the other technical schools.
Yeah. And they're making just as much money.
Absolutely.
They're making very good money.
And not paying the loan for their.
Yes, the loan.
Yeah.
Like, I'm not a, like, I never was a good test taker.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Everything was, you know, multiple choice, you know? Essays I did good because I never shut up and I could write. But that was one of the things that I, I, it seems like, you know, our school's transitioning. I mean, I know they still have testing. But you guys look, teachers look at a lot of different other things now, other than just.
A, B, C, D.
Yeah. I mean, we have to look at, I call it an album of data. We have to look at performance data, but that's not the only thing we should be looking at. We have.
See, that's what it was like when I was in school.
That's how it was.
It was pretty cut and dry, yeah.
And just because someone isn't a good test taker doesn't mean he or she isn't intelligent or has gifts. So we, we look at, the Board is seeing this, we look at things like school climate data, we look at data, we call it praise to correction ratios when we go in and look to see specific feedback data rather than just saying good jobs. Like, Rich, I liked how you were talking about trade schools, because I think that's important. So we look at attendance data, we've looked at office referral data. So it, it's shifting, unfortunately, because of what the state of Connecticut does. And, and I do like the commissioner, don't get me wrong, they do zero in on that data, the student performance data, but they do look at other things like participation in arts. We have a high rating in our district. They look at physical education data. But, yeah.
Anything else you want to talk about as far as Grizzle Public Schools are concerned or anything else?
It's all good. We're just really excited for things.
Yeah, it's a lot of information too.
It's all on our website. We have an amazing website. Everything's there.
It is very easy to navigate, I will say that.
You could probably teach a communication class on that for the town.
We'll leave that to Kayla Head.
Yeah.
Does she do the town's website too?
Uh, no, but she does.
Separately, right?
She's involved in ours.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Very talented.
Well, I appreciate you folks once again.
We appreciate you.
Thank you so much. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Enjoy your cookies, gentlemen.
Michelle will be talking again soon.[1724.31]